Welcome to the February 26, 2019 Selectmen's Meeting. Two Selectmen absent, Ed Gannier and Mark Pendergast, Town Manager, Town Clerk, Finance Director, and it looks like the whole Library Board here. Please stand with me and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
As our last meeting, we changed the order of business to get the budget hearings out of the way, mostly because we had a very busy agenda for that last meeting. We have a very limited agenda this one, so you guys are gonna have to wait. It'll take us 10 minutes mostly to get through this. So, we have the approval of the February 19 minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes as written.
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. First public comment. If you have a comment, please step to the podium. We don't have a microphone up there, but we move it if you do. First public comment is 15 minutes long, is if you have a comment, step to the podium, give your name, where you live, and address all questions to the chair. Very good. We have no public hearing. Reports of committees, is BCTV does not have a report tonight, and Envision Berwick does not. Department reports, we have none, as we're doing the budget hearing. We have no appointments or presentations. Unfinished business, the Spirit of America Award, nominations are due. I'll talk to you tomorrow about mine.
Everybody's weighed in?
Yeah. Yeah, we'll talk about that tomorrow. Town Manager, report.
We're finishing up the budget, hopefully tonight, and hopefully the Governor's budget passes in some respects, in other areas, no. So, that's all we really have. We're still trying to reach Mr. Cahaya. We did actually hear from him recently, and he said that he would, he's just finishing up some crisis in the business based on hurricanes, which I can't quite think of hurricanes, but I'll think about that down south. And he said he'd be in touch with us soon, so that's encouraging. Otherwise, that's all I have to know.
Nothing to report for Selectmen's Communications. Approval of accounts payable. We have an account payable warrant, 1-9-3-4, from February 21, 2019, the amount of $109,720.10. We have a water warrant, 0-9-3-4, from February 21, 2019, the amount of $2,504.48. We have a payroll warrant, 1-9-3-4, for February 21, 2019, the amount of $53,870.11. And a payroll warrant, 1-9-3-5, for February 28, 2019, the amount of $59,859.48. I make a motion that we pay our bills.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. New business, we have none, and we have no quick claim deeds, no abatements or supplementals. Second public comment. Second public comment is unlimited. If you want to go up and speak for an hour, I encourage you not to, but... Seeing none, as we'll move on. Executive session, we have none. Other business non-agenda items, anything to bring up from anybody? That brings us to adjournment. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All those in favor? We'll go right into budget hearings.
We're gonna let Jack move over here, because the library, I think, probably has so many of them here. Go first. We're gonna do miscellaneous.
That's all right, the more the merrier. We're not that scary. Please have a seat at the table.
You weren't kidding when you said it was gonna be quick.
Yeah. It's amazing that we can get work done.
I think you've got a report. This is just a little extra information.
Very thorough this year.
A little light reading.
Yeah.
That's just a little quick synopsis of what we've been doing the past couple of years and the comparisons to show you the amount of traffic, the increase in the programming, and people enjoying the library. So, that kind of breaks it all down for you.
That's impressive.
It is impressive. It's wonderful.
Yeah.
I think the fact that you can see the increases, you can see the good work we're doing, you can imagine the amount of work that's doubled, and the hours have stayed the same, the staffing has stayed the same. We're looking at, if you think of it right now with the library in Berwick, we're at a crossroads, and that crossroads has clearly stayed in the numbers. People love this library. They're coming to programming, the circulation. Generally, nationwide, circulation is down in libraries. Ours is up 11%. And that's because we're working really hard, but there's only so much we can do with what we have. And we're expanding, the town's growing, the library's popular, we're doing great programming, we're giving information on cultural, educational topics, and people are really happy. I hear really good things. I'm thrilled. Having said that, these crossroads are right there, the minimum wage requirements by law. You know, I have a full staff of, well, five people, and those people are professionals. These are professional, college-educated people for the staff members, and to have them have to work for minimum wage is hard, but when we're, minimum wage isn't chasing us, it's now, it's here, and we have to, by law, increase our wages. So, that's the crossroads we're at right now.
So, was the increase in your programs, increase in your attendance, increase in your circulation, are you seeing increases in your operating costs directly related to that?
Yes, sure.
You know, more electricity use, more heat?
Paper products, I mean, paper towels, you know, everything. The cost of books, the cost of CDs, the cost of movies. People have talent, yeah. The, people don't just want books, they're after eBooks, they're after best movies, they're after children's audiobooks, you know, there's things that, and those things are crazy expensive, large print books. There's so many ways I can get creative, and I do, but when it comes down to it, the cost of living's going up, and we're, we're going to have to provide the same quality that you see and that the people want, cost us more. One thing I would like to just say, on a personal note, in trying to figure out, what makes this library so special? And one thing I've seen with our town is that what I want, I don't want to happen, is that the library is thought of as separate. Our town, you know, the Berwick Public Library is the community, and we are located up, you know, up on the hill, and you have to maybe drive there, but to me, I think we have to start thinking of our town in totality, and the Berwick Public Library, that's where I see everyone in town. That's where I, I get my information on what's happening. That's where people come, senior citizens, to knit or to go to the social seniors that I just started, to, to come out of their houses in the winter and have a place to go. We're not separate from this town. We are, we are the town, we are part of the town. And just from a personal note, that's what I want to see happen more, is not us up there, we're here, we're here in the town.
You'd be glad to hear that we met with a developer today, and one of their questions had to do with recreation and the library, wondering if we had a library, so I thought that was pretty impressive.
Indeed.
Something important to them, so...
Sure. It's important to property values, it's important to education, it's important to everything.
Where are you looking to expand in your programs? Where would you like to, I should ask, I guess?
There's no limit in programming. There's no limit. The limit is my hours, how many hours can I fit into my day? Expanding with, with programming is just work. Programming is finding the people, setting it up, email, constant staffing to make sure we have, we can get people in, how much do they cost, does it fit in the budget, where we fit in the schedule, do I have staffing to work? So, that's just, that's just the hard work that goes into it. Dollars and cents-wise, I need staffing, I need more programming dollars to get those people that charge for their presentations, and usually, they're well worth it. Our fundraising activities are constant. The ability to meet those goals is not.
Because the percentage of our budget, it's approximately the same between 20 and 25% of our budget is made up of fundraising activities. So, as our budget increases, our fundraising increases.
Yeah.
Again, it's an area we have gotten, become very creative with. I think in the fall, I had, one month, I had four fundraisers between restaurant, community dinners, and the plant sale, the farmer's market, and then another restaurant, and, you know, just constantly looking at where we can get more funding.
So, you're looking for a little over $4,000 increase, is that what I see?
We requested $5,000.
$5,000, yeah, okay, yeah, $5,005, okay. Is...
The bulk of that is the salaries.
Right.
Again, we started off talking about minimum wage. As things stand today, in January, when the minimum wage goes up another dime, we're at two of our five staff, half a million, or below it.
And from your material supplied, it looks like you're continuing your hours of operation with fewer people working, which is commendable. Well, I, I agree with you. I think the library is an integral part of the town, and, you know, I needed to know before that I fully support you, and I don't have a problem, no, with this budget, as I think you guys do an awesome job with the limited amount of money you have, and I'm hoping that is, that we can continue working together, and, you know, I look forward to it, so...
I agree. I think these numbers are impressive, so, great job, absolutely.
Thank you.
Now, is, when you were here last year, you said you were gonna be installing an automatic counter?
We did install that.
Right, yeah, and...
Yeah.
And so, that gives you the accurate count?
Actually, that's, we have two years on the, the first year I was here, we did not have it, the second year we do, and then this cash, it's so hard with the fiscal and the...
Right, the calendar, yeah, yeah.
Yes, we have it.
Yes.
It's an accurate count.
Right, so, is, but... Any further questions, comments, observations? No? Thank you.
Thanks so much.
It's been, it's been great working with you, and I look forward to continuing.
Great, thank you.
And you guys can come every meeting if you're gonna bring this many people, and most people we've had.
I know, right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Want to go to the... We can come back to the rest of the miscellaneous, and we'll get the fire department.
Yeah, we'll do the fire department first.
Dennis is pretty uncomfortable, so I'd like to take him first.
Yeah. Dennis? Dennis, we'll take you next.
Yeah, right here.
Yeah, is, you be, is, operated on, what, two days ago?
So, you're doing well, be about six, six weeks.
We'll make sure we don't have any major fires or anything.
Kind of so. We have plenty of staff to take their place, so, for all that.
Oh, so, we don't need you? Is that what you're saying?
Mm-hmm. Guess that was wrong.
Must be the medicine.
Yeah, no, 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 no. More than glad to have you here.
If you look at full-time wages, the full-time wages includes Chief Plant, but also includes his full-time EMTs, firefighter EMTs. As you know, we're in the middle of contract negotiations with them. We did put 2% in. They are requesting more than that for the next three years, but we, we'll see how we end up, so, on that. Of course, longevity, Medicare, retirement, all fits into that. Health insurance did go up this year, and that's pretty much just for, because firefighters have their insurance, health insurance through the Teamsters, so... Not a whole lot of difference. You're looking at a 4.1% increase on, hopefully, building maintenance will disappear. Dispatch services is one area that did go up this year. Some things weren't included in last year, as I said earlier, went to police, that we were kind of late in getting the overall costs before we transitioned into the budget. So, it's, some of the things, the fiber optic cost is gonna be there.
How's that working, hopefully?
Dispatch?
Yeah.
Very well. A few minor issues, but overall, it's, actually, I think it's better for the town than what we have.
Good, glad to hear it.
What we had wasn't good, but this is better.
Right, right. And, you know, I, I like the long-term part of it, you know, the stability of that.
Even South Berwick said that they're very happy with it. It's out of their budget, and just the one number, and no personnel issues, and they're having good luck with it, so, it's encouraging. It's been, some requests for some regular, you know, capital improvement, items like turnout gear, SCBA's equipment. We're putting money in for trucks that we don't, that we have to eventually replace down the road, build up that reserve. Otherwise, it's, it's pretty bare bones, besides that.
Yeah, I, I looked at the, this year's budget and tried wherever I could to limit the, any increases that were possible, and felt that I, myself and Steve, we did a pretty decent job in trying to accomplish that. However, I would bring up, and I'd like to discuss with the board for consideration, that's the staffing level. Staffing level, as you know, last year, the town approved the per diem, half the 30 hours a day. We have done fairly well with that program. There have been occasions since July that we were down a couple of people. Right now, we're back up to four, we initially had five. So, it's a like downward upward motion. It's a program that's new to Berwick. I can tell you that it is working, and I would also like to suggest to the board for consideration that we look at expanding those hours for per diem. That's not in this budget. There's a reason why I didn't put it in this budget, but I want to bring it up, because I think the board, either now or in the near future, needs to start looking at expanding the hours of per diem to 24/7. From eight till six at night, I have one, two people, one full-time, one per diem, and after six, I only have one. That concerns me a lot, concerns me as chief a lot, when we went with a one full-time at 24/7, but it's paid off today. But I think the time is coming where we're gonna have to really take a hard look at staffing for the department. Our on-call force is right now around 20 people.
And how many of them are our ages?
Well, you know, that's, we're not attracting a lot of younger individuals.
Right.
Although I do have two young people now on-call that just started, that are going through the training process, but it's very, very difficult to keep the recruitment up, to keep the recruitment up, not only for the on-call, but for the per diem. But the per diem is working, you know, and I think it will work for years down the road if...
What kind of increase would you suggest?
I would suggest you go 24/7 with one per diem, and you're looking at probably an increase around $95,000 to do that. And I understand it's a lot of money, the services that we're providing, our call rate right now is up to 156 calls since January. That's unreal. But my concern is the safety of that one person out there working at 3:00 in the morning. If that one person needs to go with the ambulance to the hospital for whatever reason, then I have a $500,000 piece of equipment sitting out on the side of the road that I can't get back to the station until I find somebody to get it there, so... There are a lot of number of issues that come up.
Right, sorry.
This, this whole process that the town of Berwick has taken on as far as their fire protection services, and it's a learning experience for the boards, a learning experience for my people, for me, and the townspeople.
Yeah.
And it will continue to be until we get to the point where we feel comfortable. But I felt it necessary to bring that to your attention. You really should give a hard look at that.
Yeah, we're seeing much longer response times from the ambulance service. I just know they're very busy, and that's a concern that I have, and Chief and I've talked about that, so, having our people on-site, I think, is pretty important.
Yep.
We, right now, as a department, provide a basic EMT level, even though I have two, presently have two people who are paramedics, we're only licensed the EMT level. Talking with my staff, and the Town Manager and myself have discussed this, and we'll be discussing a little bit more, they feel, the staff feels, that they're trained as paramedics, it'd be nice to be able to offer that service to residents of Berwick in a time of need. Normally, you'll get a paramedic on an ambulance service coming in, but there's no guarantee on that either. So, we're looking at maybe expanding our license, so, to allow our paramedics to do paramedic functions, which is way over and above the basic EMT. Again, all this is a learning process for Berwick, but I think it's some benefit that we can offer the residents that they're not presently getting at this point in time. It's all new, and it's a...
How long is our contract with American Ambulance? Do you remember?
We have, we have one more year. One more year with them, and, and we can automatically renew that if, if we would like. Doesn't, no cost to us for that.
Right. Well, you said there's been a change in management over there?
There's a change in, in management there, and we've noticed the difference. I think everybody has, some of us have, I know, I've heard it from them. York County Ambulance does, South Berwick and I think North Berwick, but I have some concerns with, with that as well, so... I think for in-town residents, if we have qualified people, we're gonna do a better job.
I agree.
That's a whole nother area, the fire services, you know, here.
Right, right.
And we have some very qualified people that are leading this department in that direction, and over time, it will more likely come about where the department would be able to provide that service 24/7. That's well down the road, but that would be a goal that the department would be looking to be able to provide to the residents as we continue to grow, and we are growing.
Absolutely.
So...
Any questions on the overall budget?
No.
No.
No, as you said, it's basically pretty bare bone, the only increases, you know, things that are beyond our control, and...
Well, I tried to keep it that way, because I, as you well know... Well, I tried to keep it that way because I, as you well know, there's also a taxpayer bill. So, and I feel that, you know, the town has been more than fair with equipment, done what they've had to do, but we have a new station coming, thank you, everybody, uh, that will, uh, hopefully motivate to get more people on board. Recruitment is tough today, it really is.
Everywhere, yeah.
Anyways, I'll stop speaking.
Yeah, yeah, we know that, we know that problem, is, uh, you know, not just fire department, it's, you know, the road crew, the police, everybody, you know, is, uh, so. Anything else you'd like to bring up, Mr. Manager, about the budget, uh?
No, not on the fire budget.
Okay.
Our public safety people put together good budgets and it's usually bare bones for needs and a few increases here and there for capital items, but.
Is, um, back to the per diem, the increases, um, you say approximately $95,000 to go 24/7?
With one, yes.
With one, is, um, and is, you know, is there any benefit to starting with a half measure? You know, is, uh, rather than, you know, 24/7, just, you know, covering?
Well, we're starting, right now, we're covering 50 hours a week.
50 hours.
So that takes us until 6:00 at night.
Okay.
Our calls, um, you know, I can't sit here and say all our calls now are on days because that's not the case.
Right, right.
They're spread out over the 24-hour period.
Right.
The, the issue becomes is that one person, whether it's an EMS call or whether it's a fire call, fire-related call, somebody trapped in a vehicle, motor vehicle accident, 3:00 in the morning, I don't know how many full-time, I mean, uh, on-call people I'm going to get to show, I might not have any.
Right.
And it's just me and one other guy or, or just that one other guy. So from a chief's standpoint, I have to look at all those scenarios and make recommendations to the board and the townspeople to say, this isn't a good thing for that one person out there at 3:00 in the morning, in the morning.
Right.
He's on a truck, he's got a 500-piece, a thousand-dollar piece of equipment that he may have to leave on the side of the road to drive the ambulance to help the medics out that are treating a heart, a heart attack patient. We do what we got to do.
Right.
We've done that and we will continue to do that, but it's not good and it's not in the best interest of the town. So that's why, you know, that, that option came up, uh, like I said, the program is working, uh, we're recruiting other people, like, uh, we've got a full-time firefighter from Sanford that just joined up with us, we got another one from, uh, I think it was Nashua that joined up, which is helping out the town of Berwick, so. I think it's something that I would, I'll even be unhappy to discuss further with you later on if you'd like, but it's something that we really need to take a look at. I know it's a lot of money, but.
It's also, it's also safety.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Good, that's for you.
Go home, take care of yourself.
I wasn't sure what time it is.
Yeah, there's no. Push that off, because we're not quite ready, so. Uh, we can go back to miscellaneous for now, um, just to, you know, library, um, we'll give you a chance to get to that page. Oh, yeah, you can, you can sit down though, we're just going through some little things here. It's, uh, tab 15.
Yep.
After the library, there's, uh, the stormwater engineer, um, cost, we do this every year, that's for Christine LaVasca, um, she does our MS4 program, um, I got notification today that, that the cost may be going up a little bit, but we share her, she's contracted, contracted through, uh, Southern Maine Planning and Development, um, and, uh, there may be a little bit of an increase this year. The economic development budget is, um, what envision, basically the envision Berwick Group puts together, um, and, uh, James apologizes he could not be here, he's at another meeting tonight, so. Just before the library proposal.
Yeah.
15.
Yep.
Do the transfers.
There we go.
I can walk you through, uh, there's a decrease this year, we've taken some things out of the budget, but we've added in, uh, 25,000, uh, for, uh, funding for grants that we'll accumulate, uh, we have three or four grant areas that we are planning on applying for in the next few years, one of them, hopefully, this year, which will be the Community Development Block Grant, um, it's, they have two that we were looking at, one is the downtown revitalization, they offer that to one community a year, it's a $400,000 grant, um, and we were also looking at the infrastructure grant, but they decided, the CDBG office has fa, decided to phase that in, so the ones they had it last year got a certain X number of dollars and this year they're coming, they'll get, uh, the second phase, which will complete their projects. So we won't be able to, there's no reason to apply for that, um, otherwise, it's, uh, basic costs and. Not much of an increase at all, so it's actually, I think there's a decrease in that budget.
Yeah, the Vision Berwick is another one of those groups, uh, you know, has, uh, been doing wonderful work and, uh, you know, there's a lot of the stuff that's going on in town here, wouldn't have, wouldn't have happened if it hadn't been for Vision Berwick.
Yeah, they are, they are the reason for what has happened across the street. That group, uh, Young and with Frank Underwood and a few others have driven that project, um, and, uh, they have, they, I did find their sheet, they have a, we're a member of the Falls Chamber of Commerce, which includes Somersworth, South Berwick, Rawlingsford, uh, so, uh, it's a cost of $220. Social media marketing is, is a hundred dollars a, a year, um, James is also, uh, putting together a concert, uh, series, that's what his meeting is tonight, and, uh, that's rather exciting, that's going to be, happen out in front of the building and we'll have, uh, food carts and all kinds of good stuff, so we're looking forward to that. And they have a ton of, uh, subcommittees that they help, there's 2,500 in that, part of that would be the Rec Master Plan, which we'll hear at our next meeting into March, uh, they're about to roll that.
So we heard. Reckon showed us today that would be, right?
They're still working on their downtown vision plans and a lot of that is a traffic study and just numerous things that they do, um, and we've got, we have a new website, uh, we switched from, uh, gov.com to Revive, Revise, who's got a really nice, uh, contract with us and, and they've done a great job, I'm hoping to see that in the next couple of months, they'll roll that out, so it'll be much more attractive site and also easier to maneuver through for people to find things, so I'm excited about that. And again, that was James and a few of us working on that, so that's their budget. Emergency management, we only fund that at $500 a year, I don't think it's enough, but I didn't change it because we have another, increases other places. And also, the unfunded liabilities, we funded that last year at 13,000, had, had been, but prior to that, um, 15,000, I pushed it back up to 15,000, um, just to keep that fund, in place, just in case we have people, long-term, we have a lot of long-term employees, uh, who, if they decide to retire, uh, there's quite a bit of time in there that we have to pay out, so. And the overlay is, we funded the overlay this year at, uh, 103,000, uh, we have a, the revale is going to kick in this year, um, in August for the tax rate, so we expect that we, and that may change, just to prepare for anybody who questions the revale and, uh, numbers that we have. So far, the increase in valuation, according to Paul, is 44 million, that includes any new development, any new buildings, so we're going to see a, a substantial change there, which is what we hope to do for a revale. We picked up a lot of stuff that we didn't have, uh, they've done a good job so far. Any questions on the miscellaneous? Okay, DCTV, just so everybody knows, this is a program that does not use taxpayer money, it's all funded through our, um, franchise fees and we've negotiated a new contract, so this past year, instead of 2.5%, we're now getting a full 5%, um, and, um, we can go through that with you, you have all that in front of you? I got version number three today. That's okay, you're a perfectionist, so. What you see in the beginning is their part-time stipend wages that we, um, have for people who volunteer their times, volunteer, but they get paid for it, um.
And we still have volunteer positions too, I mean, Maureen is still volunteering with us, Kevin Gray is in the switcher room right now, learning how to do it, so, yeah.
She's, she's even convinced our son to volunteer.
Yeah.
He's been editing videos for me.
Is Tammy still?
No, I haven't, I haven't seen Tammy in a while, but I'm kind of.
Yeah. Otherwise, a, a full-time position gets the health insurance, uh, the, um, retirement, all the FICA, all of that good stuff, um, the materials of printing is, um, $1,200 this year, I don't have anything to compare it with, but, uh, materials and supplies, it's a very thorough, um, budget, covers a lot of area, but we've had, I can't say enough about what this, this particular budget has done with what we have.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
It's, uh, programming doesn't seem to slow down as, like the director, and, um, it just continues to improve and improve and improve. Equipment budget in here that, uh, just updating and improving our equipment.
Yep.
So we do more.
Well, the, the big one for that is going to be, um, the ability to stream to any platform, so I can not only put it on the new website, which would be awesome to see, but YouTube channel, we can put it out there, um, if we wanted to do on the archive, we could do there potentially, so the idea is to give us more flexibility, um, in order to reach a wider audience, so. And then I've, I've added a few things for memberships to local organizations who provide an awful lot of, uh, programming for our station, um, and I kind of call them partnerships, the library and the Historical Society have been great partners, um, and I think we work really well together. And then, of course, a lot of it's the room that you saw up front, um, that's coming right along, we've got the lights, um, studio space, Roland is, um, hopefully going to finish the electrical upgrades in there this week, and then it's a matter of pulling the lines over so that we can have the control room in there and the server in here. And then Kevin and I will be sitting elbow to elbow trying to work. So it's pretty exciting, and I've already had people expressing interest, as a, a matter of fact, for the studio space, I have several people who want to do interviews with veterans, um, and then I've also talked with the town manager about a managership report monthly or something like that, just to address that, you can let people know what's going on.
Because they don't think enough of them already.
I'd agree that I would do it, so. I don't like being in front of the camera. She makes it easy.
Any questions? You're doing a great job.
Yeah.
Really, I'm enjoying it and.
You can tell.
You can tell.
She keeps legs up when you talk about it, so, you know, it's definitely a wheelhouse.
And she never stops talking about it. Which is okay.
That's okay, exactly.
Nice save.
You haven't had dinner yet, have you?
Any other questions, no?
No. Thank you.
All right. I think that completes everything that we had planned for departments, but I wanted to just go through the top sheets, I think I gave you the summary sheet, um, and just go through some of the scenarios that we're looking at, um, so. It's all conjecture because we don't know what we're going to do with the revenue sharing, which is on the revenue side, um, just right here.
Oh, is this one, is it this? Sorry.
Maybe that's the one. On this sheet, you'll see the 2018, 19 budget, which is what we're in right now, and what our municipal, uh, subtotals were, revenues and our use of surplus, um, comparing that to 2019 and 2020, we're up by quite a bit of money, 14.73%, our, our revenues are up, uh, 2.43%, which includes our revenue sharing. I have pulled the use of surplus, I pulled out of that number because that number, the use of surplus is in two parts, part of it is what we have on undesigned fund balance that we can use, it's 12.5%, uh, we maintain that in our fund balance for operations and that's by, you have a policy that does that, which I think, I've never seen that except here, and I think it's a great thing to have. And anything else over that, we are allowed to put it into capital projects, um, which mostly is for roads, uh, and that's what we've used it for in the past. This year, uh, you had just under about 495,000 in funding that we could use, uh, I'm only putting in 250,000, uh, I'm not going to use up all of it. And also, uh, that 479,000 includes monies that we have for restricted funds that come for different projects we've put money aside for, so, uh, I have not put in any money from the Lena Clark Fund, we don't, I don't have that end of the year number yet, but I will and I will probably, uh, increase that number a little bit, um, so, uh, net appropriation, when we back out all the revenues, uh, is 3.6 million, and we use that number for our, uh, net appropriation for the, comparing it to our estimated usable limit, the LD1 number that we have to do every year, that's by state law, is, we have a cap on how much we could spend, uh, ours this last year was 3.7 million, this year, uh, Maureen did that before she left, which is nice, because I keep doing that calculation, and it's 3.8 million, uh, net appropriation for this year is 3.6, so we're under our LD1, which is very positive. If you go down to the next area, I, we put in the initial appropriation, our budget, uh, last year was 5.9, this year is 6.5, it's grown basically by $550,000 this year, and I'll, I'll look into that later. County tax, again, we don't know a number on that yet, and Superintendent Conley gave me a 7% increase, and that is not a concrete number either because we, we don't know what we're getting from the state government. She's, she's made a lot of promises this year, very ambitious, um, and she's also, which I think we've talked about, uh, by statute, the revenue sharing is supposed to go back up to 5% from 2%, um, her budget that she presented, she wants to do it gradually and then put back 2.6 this year and 3 point, and 3% the year after that, and I can tell you that just about every manager in the state of Maine is screaming because we have been out that extra, um, uh, 3% for, since 2008, um, and it's in statute, so the legislature will have to vote to change that with her budget if that's the case, and I have contacted our representatives and screamed pretty loud that it's, that funding does a lot for municipalities to offset taxes and I'm hoping that it stays, and I know MMA is going to advocate for that pretty hard. So, once we back out all the revenues based on that, with the four hundred thousand in there, we are looking at a total appropriation of twelve million, two hundred thousand, four sixty-one, based on seven percent from the school and five percent from a county, which is a nine point two-eight percent increase in the budget. That being said, where the, where the increases are, are mostly in the road budget and some of the capital expenditures. In the operating budgets, we have some one-time expenditures, software updates from the Invision appraisal software. That's a pretty hefty amount of money this year because we're going to the, um, the cloud, and Trio's doing the same thing with theirs, and it's a one-time expense. Once we get that, the licensing fees don't change dramatically. So, those are, those are the two things really driving our budget this year. And we just, we need to do roads. That is so critical, and we haven't funded it. Last year, we funded it at three hundred and forty thousand. Didn't get a lot done, doesn't go very far. But six hundred thousand, we plan to do Pine Hill Road up to Cemetery Road, finish the Wentworth Top Travel there, Beet Ridge, Pond Road, and then do Worcester Road, and that will probably eat up some of it. Robert would like to do the Riddlin Road, which is a small section, which is currently gravel, and, uh, gravel the road. That would, and we wouldn't have any other gravel roads to do, which is...
When you say that, the Riddlin Road is...
There's a section of Riddlin Road.
Well, there's a big section that crosses over the bridge that we can't use.
Yeah.
So, which end is he talking about? The Pine Hill end of the?
The Pine Hill end.
Pine Hill end.
Yeah.
So, he must be talking about bringing it up to the bridge?
I was told it's a short section, so I'm not sure they're going all the way into the bridge.
Well, because that is only a short section left there.
Yeah.
But, yeah, that's first I've heard about that.
That's their wish list. I haven't agreed to that yet. I want to see a cost. Also, as you know, at our last meeting last week, Dennis Dupree asked about...
Backstreet.
Backstreet. That, I, Robert and I have to take a look at that to see what it entails. We, with all the snow we've been getting and ice, we haven't had a chance to do that, but that's above and beyond what we have in our budget, so we'll see. I may put it in there, and we'll see if we have enough money to get to it.
Personally, I, I, I think the, the Backstreet is a higher priority than the section of Riddlin Road.
Yeah, I don't disagree. Well, and then we have to work with Mark Tahier on that because we need to take some of that green space that we have to widen that section.
Right.
So, trucks can get in and out of there, and, and part of the vision plan that Mark had put together with us was adding parking spaces there. So, and I think that's very important, so to get people off the, off the side of the streets, so. So, that's, if this, all these numbers were to play out, and not counting the Betty and the overlay and the homestead exemption, we're looking at a tax rate of seventeen twelve, which is a drop in, uh, by forty-eight cents. I doubt it will come out like that in the end, but, and then if we don't get the, I took four hundred thousand out of the revenue sharing, that would drive it up eight cents at this point, but it's a fictitious number, basically, because to give us a ballpark of where we're falling. And that's based on forty-four million dollars in valuation increase. And Paul said, almost fell off his chair when he gave me that number because they haven't finished the rebound numbers yet, so they'll be working on that all through the spring, and we'll commit taxes in August.
And unfortunately, that's a double-edged sword because the higher evaluation, it affects our school budget.
Yes, it does.
You know?
Yeah.
So, it's, uh, you know, it means that we'll be paying a larger percentage of the school.
Yeah, it's, and our county budget.
Right.
So, we'll see where it falls, but it's going to be an interesting year.
I'd, I'd like to see a drop of forty-eight cents. Yeah, the, the increase of eight cents really shocked me, that it was so small, you know, I was expecting something larger than that, so even that isn't...
Forty-four million is, is quite a large number.
Right.
And you always get these shifts, but, um, and I don't know how much of that is new development. He thought it was mostly just adjustments, but they found out doing their rebound, doing their listed measure.
I don't know, we've had a lot of building in the last year.
Yeah, and we had, last year, not counting the CMP, we grew by fifteen million, just new buildings, new homes, big ones, so.
Like I say, when houses are going for three hundred, four hundred thousand, it doesn't take many to get to a million dollars.
Yeah, no, it doesn't. So, that's where we are at this point. This completes the overview of the budget. And once I get, uh, the numbers from the union, we'll plug those in and see where we fall, but, uh, that's that. Lot of, lot of big tickets, you know, roads mostly, but...
Well, it is, I'm, I'm really happy that, you know, with, over the last several years, all the major, you know, purchases we've had with the Public Works and the fire department and all that, that, you know, we're at a point where, for once, we're not buying a big ticket item, other than roads.
Yep. The biggest, the biggest one this year for capital is going to be the bond payment on the, on the police, on a fire station.
Yeah.
And it's, it's smaller than, uh, for the first year, you know, but the following year it will be up around four hundred thousand. I, they don't approve those, all bond applications until mid-March, so I'll have a better idea than what that total, total cost will be, but, and what interest rates they're going to charge. Ran another motorization scheduled yesterday, and they're still using, you know, two point six for the first few years, so that's, I'm hoping that's what we do. We'll increase over the life of the bond, but as we pay it down. Any other questions?
I just want to make a comment about the, the fire department, the new fire building. Is, we had a meeting with the architect and an engineering firm, and moving forward with that, the architects are working on full fits of drawings and moving ahead with that, so, is, we have a few questions we have to answer for the engineering firm as far as right away out to Sullivan Street. Everything seems to be moving ahead and going in the right direction.
Engineer's got a lot of work ahead of him to do, but we're concerned about the wetland areas, and that's based on what we need to do, on how much impervious area we have, so getting rid of the Esterbrook School's going to help that a lot, and, uh, well, I think it'll, it'll be nice when it's done. They've chosen what shape they want. Some thought the straight station, but it's kind of a little bit more of an angle, and they'll get in and do the police station, and they'll, they really will match. It'll make for a very nice public safety complex, I think, so. Pretty good. Hopefully, it'll be done by next June.
Be nice.
A year from next...
Year from, year from June.
A year from this June. Anything else?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. That concludes our programming for tonight.